Board of County Commissioners is now in session. Next on the agenda is Sheriff A.J. Smith, discussion and approval. Sheriff, if you could, let's start with item B, because I think that'd be a real quick thing. On the control panel.
Yes, sir. And good morning to y'all, and thank you for having me here today.
Good morning.
The, and Commissioner Sanders, thank you for coming through last week and seeing what we were doing over there. I hope we didn't keep you locked up too long.
Oh, thank you, Sheriff, for making me feel at home over there, but not too at home.
Well, and I hope that the other Commissioners will have time, you know, before the new budget year to come by and take a look at what's going on. But anyway, the control panel controls all the doors in the jail so that we can easily open them without having to take a key and manually opening the doors. And of course, the jail's 30 years old, the control panel is the same. They are, it's a very specialized piece of equipment. We're hoping to go to a touchscreen, kind of like a computer monitor, so they can just touch it, and that'll activate the doors. And it's, you know, kind of a sole source item, not a lot of people make them, so that's what we're hoping to get approval to do there, because it's a safety issue. If the doors won't open and there's some kind of crisis going on inside, particularly if there's a corrections deputy in there, we want to be able to get in and get out as quickly as possible. So, there's two panels, one in the control room back in the jail, and then one in dispatch, which is up towards the front, so that either one of them can open the doors throughout the jail. So, they both have to be replaced, and I know it's, it's an expensive item just for, just for a couple of pieces of hardware, but they, they really do a lot of, there's a lot of function there, so they're, they're expensive.
And Commissioner, I talked to the, both the Major and the Sheriff, and this company that they've, that gave us the quote, this is the one they've been dealing with for so long, this one they know, that knows the system, and because it's a little bit older, probably one of the few, if not the only, that has the equipment needed to do the replacement. And just for a little bit more background, if you see in front of you, I handed you the list, just to explain, and then we'll go back to item A. But in item A, this was the list, the capital list, with priority. I have to exchange number one and number two, because we're talking about number two right now.
Right.
And we want to do that right away. We will try and deal with what's there as number one, the replacement AC unit in the administration building, and the new phone system. We'll deal with that in the next, our next budget year. But we really want to try to get this panel station down, because the danger of those doors not closing, especially in any incident, or right, whatever happens, you're putting your dispatch. And without dispatch, where are we?
Well, now, let me ask you a question, with, because I've already talked to the Sheriff about it, and I've talked to y'all, because this concerned me, going over there and seeing that, and seeing how old it is, and seeing how it's not operating right, and so are we gonna, since we've already got a quote of this for $40,000, right?
Yes.
So, can we declare, Mr. Schuler, a sole source, that we can go ahead and do it underneath an emergency situation?
Well, what I heard here is there's multiple people who sell this, so it doesn't sound factually like you could do that, but clearly, from what I'm hearing, there's an emergency, so you could declare a, an emergency situation based on the safety hazard to the COs and the other personnel in the Sheriff's Department, and authorize moving forward on that basis, and it may be, I don't know if they've looked yet, this, they may be able to piggyback onto the state bid list, I don't know, but either the state bid list is a piggyback-
I don't think it's on a state contract.
It's not.
Because there's not a lot of people doing this, so.
Then I would declare an emergency, and then waive your local bid policy, and proceed with the purchase.
Okay, the $40,000 will come out of the capital outlay, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Of this year?
Of this current budget, either way.
Of this year.
Okay.
Of this year that we're in now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go out and declare this an emergency, and a sole source, and go ahead and let's get that control panel for the jail.
Sir, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, we got to keep up with public safety.
Is there anything else we're gonna try to do out of this year's budget, Mike? On this page?
Uh, no, sir. No, I would, if, I'll let the Sheriff continue, but I think for the next budget year, the two things we're gonna try our best to do is replace that AC unit system in the administration building, which is, how old?
30. It's 30 years old, and I think they just patched it. We were down for about five days, and everybody really learned to appreciate air conditioning, because it was hot in there. So, yeah, the Commissioner came by, and fortunately, it was in the morning.
Who didn't pay the lip bill every year?
Is there, is there anything else we're gonna try to do in this upcoming budget year, Mike, besides the AC unit?
Not in this, in the upcoming year, I'm sorry, yes, the, um, the phone system, and the Sheriff advised me that in, he told me of two, I don't know, there'll probably be more. East Point Fire was one, and there was another incident, where because of being flooded with calls, their system crashed. We can't.
So, the AC unit, now, let me get this straight, we're doing the $40,000 control panels out of this year's budget?
Yes.
The AC unit will come out of what? This year or next year?
Next year, of, let me just say this, of 1819.
Okay.
It'll come out of.
Okay.
So, will the phone system, and it depends, if we can lease it, and it works out better, then that'll come under the Sheriff's budget. If, if outright purchase is, is better, then we'll deal with that, but that we can bid. Those two items can be, can be, go through the our bid process.
So, between right now and in next year's budget, we're gonna take care of the top three things, right?
Yes, yeah, the end of this year, next year's budget, the top three.
Okay. And then we'll look at the other ones that the Sheriff here in subsequent years?
Yeah, future years.
Okay, okay. Is that-
Well, that phone system, it, it just, that, that's just valuable to touch.
Well, if I, if I can, Commissioners, anything that we could do this year that, I mean, it's mission critical, just like the phone system, if we have another, when we, sometimes if we have a car wreck, and a lot of people start calling on 911, then the system crashes. And I just hate for people to call and get nothing, and so, you know, and just like the air conditioner, hopefully, it will take us into next year, they patched it, but there's no guarantee, because they really had a hard time finding the parts to fix it this time, they had to get them from out west somewhere, and, and they really didn't think they could get them. So, I mean, those, those three items are really, really critical to maintain the operation of the Sheriff's Office. So, if there's any way we could do those this year, that would be great, and then, you know, look at some of our other things for next year, that would, that would be my suggestion, if possible. Just so we can continue to provide the service to the citizens that, you know, they expect.
What we're gonna have to do, though, is see, we're in July, you know, you may have storms, you may have a lot of different things, but as we move closer, if there's money available in this year's budget, then we will, we'll try to accommodate that, I don't know that we can, but.
Yeah.
I mean, we can look at it, but for sure, we're gonna take care of the touch, the touch panels, which motion's already been done on that. And then when you're talking about next year, now, you're talking about October, when, when is it?
October 1.
October 1, that is next year, so.
Right.
Hopefully, the AC will make it from now to October, and then we can get that replaced, and the phone stations, right?
Yeah, the phone system.
Okay. So, if we're not able to come up with the money currently, the, the new budget will start October 1, we can move forward with that, so we're not talking about a year from now.
No, I got you.
Months, basically.
Yeah, I mean, it ain't, it's just a matter of a couple of months, and we'll be back, we'll get some money to do some of these other things. And then we'll try to proceed down this list as we move forward, is that what you were saying?
Yes, sir, as, it, for me, as time moves on over the next years, at least, we have a way of planning for our future budget workshops, you know, in future years, as to what we could do, and-
Try to cross these items off and move forward.
And one item, Mr., that's okay, one item, Mr. Chairman, I want y'all to take note to, you know, the Sheriff came up here with an X-ray system, that he was wanting to cap the outlay $184,000, he's taken that completely out. So, I wanted to make that note to you all, to, to let y'all realize it. But the phone system, if we get enough money, I'm like the Chairman, we need to go ahead and fix it, because in the eastern part of the county, the outline areas, you know, we rely a lot on telephone calls, so, you know, and I'm concerned with what this will bring in for the, with the, with the situation being like, whether it's a fire and all that, I'm, I'm concerned if we get a storm in here, how is that gonna react with a backup of calls, you know?
Yeah. And this list might change, the Sheriff, and the Major might come up with something else during the year, next year, okay, this, this is not our priority, so, you know, it's gonna be fluid, we'll see, we'll do the best that we can, you know?
Yeah.
I will say, did you guys have issues over the, on July 3rd with Verizon? I know, that's another problem we're having.
Yeah, I don't recall, seems like, I mean, that, that's kind of comes and goes, the cell-
I think they have a capacity problem.
Yeah, no, when there's a lot of people, then, a lot of times, cell phones don't work, like, right downtown, yeah, there was problems during the 3rd of July, yes. Because the system's not made, I don't think they have the infrastructure here for when there's an extra 10,000 people in town.
Capacity, I agree. So, your good old landline becomes important once again.
Um, is that pretty much what we got here on the prioritize list, and what we're gonna try to do this year, to try to help the Sheriff out with some of this stuff?
Yes.
And what about the ordinance here? Were we dealing with that this morning?
That is in 12 minutes, yes, sir.
Okay, so we're dealing with that in 12 minutes?
Yes. We can't, we can't hold a public hearing until it's been advertised for.
So, we can jump straight to that, and go state.
I'm gonna make another motion, then, oh, I'll make a motion, we, on that phone line, saying we got with a couple of months. We make that right after the budget, and they go fix it then.
Yeah.
I think that's already there, ain't it?
Yeah, that's our plan.
But I'm putting it in motion, so it'll go through.
Okay, so both?
I meant we're gonna do-
The phone and the AC, or just, you want the phones over the AC, is what you're trying?
No, they're gonna do the phone this year, I mean, they're doing a, they're doing a-
Control panel.
They're doing a control teller right now, with this budget, but I wanna, soon as we get into the new budget, to start working on that phone system.
Okay.
That's what I'm making the motion.
After October 1, get into the new budget?
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Sanders, so we can authorize getting these new phone stations-
Prioritize it, yeah, prioritize.
Yeah, after October 1.
Yeah.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask a question. If we vote and approve the motion on the floor, is that somehow going to negate if we find out that we have the funds left in this current year to go ahead and do it? Or is it gonna put it October the 1st?
If you all don't mind, I would bring it back to you, if, if I think we can afford it in the current budget year, and say, do you want to make another motion to override what Commissioner Lockley just said? If that's the way you want to do it?
Yeah, I'm just asking.
I can add to my motion if we find out we got money before the first, and do it then.
I'm in my second to reflect that also.
Okay.
The motion's been amended, and the second's been amended, to reflect that if we have the money, we can go ahead and get this, the new phone station put in under this year's current budget, if we have the funds available. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries also. Any other thing you need to tell us, Sheriff?
Nope, I appreciate your, everything y'all do for us, and I look forward to seeing the rest of y'all when you get time in your schedules to stop by and see what we're doing over there.
I guess we'll be seeing you later this week, huh?
Yeah, that's right.
But you're here.
Time flies, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. All right.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, since we have a couple of minutes, Kim, Kim Bodine, can we, hey, can we squeeze in Kim, and she gets her, because she has a, she has a right back to Panama City.
Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Kim Bodine, I'm the Executive Director for Career Source Gulf Coast. I was worried about being late, because there was a bad accident in Tundal, but, hey, it all worked out. I have really some housekeeping items before you this morning. As you know, we are guided much by federal and state law, so the two issues that we've brought in this morning, one is an ITA waiver, that is something that's required by the state, if we don't spend 50% of all of our money on putting people into training, we have to request a waiver from the state. We request a 30%, but I'll tell you, we're closing out this current year at 40%. We do that just to be cautious, because it's punitive if you miss what you've asked for, but our goal, of course, is to get, to get as close as 50% as we can, so typically, we will always be at least 10% higher than the waiver that we've asked for. The second item is our budget, we are required by state law to give that to our county commissions in each of the counties that we serve, for your review. And then the third item is a MOU and infrastructure funding agreement, which is required under federal law. This one is between us and the Division of Blind Services. We have one more MOU after this one to be approved by our counties, and it is for vocational rehab. I will tell you that we have been working with Voc Rehab for 16 months now, to get an MOU, so we hope we're getting close to the end, and I'll be bringing that before you whenever we do get it approved through DOE at the state level, but that's what I have this morning.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
For public record, what did MOU stand for?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you.
It is something that we're required with all of our partners by federal law, we owe a law.
Pleasure to the board.
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? There be no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I've been thinking about what that gentleman said about insurance, I wanna, I'll make a motion, we check out his proposal, see where we at. Can you save money on?
Well, Commissioner Lockley, I don't know that, I mean, it certainly is up to the Board if they want to do that by motion, but typically, if somebody wants to send us a quote, they'll just send us a quote.
Oh.
I don't know that it requires Board action.
Okay.
You don't have to do RFPs, RFQs, I mean, if you're gonna-
Well, is it coming up for renewal? I mean, that's, that's what I don't know.
All right. I just wanted to find out, can we save money?
Right.
Can you get a better lead?
Well, can we, I don't know, can I check with the clerk and report back to y'all, because I don't really know when it's coming, do we know when it's coming up for renewal?
Coming up in October.
Right, we just, I don't, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Without really necessary worryin' about a, a motion or a second, going along the same road we've been going along, for transparency reasons, I'd sure like to look at it before October 1st, just as a direction item.
Sure, sure.
Me too, I mean, that-
You want to go out for RFP?
I mean, it would be an RFP.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go out for RFP.
Second.
Okay.
We got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders, go out for RFPs on insurance, building, uh, we're not talking about health insurance, we're talking about-
I don't know what, like I said, I don't-
I tell you what, can we do that?
I think, I think it's about building.
No, it's, uh, it's not the health.
Hold, hold up here, y'all. If we're going out for it, because we've already done it for auditor, we've al, we're doing it with TDC, we're doing it with the auditor, now you're saying the insurance, let's, let's group that up, and say, all the professional services, engineers and everything, you know, let's go out there and see what we got. Because I know on engineers, we have one engineering company, there is some counties that has as many as eight or nine engineering companies. So, let's include this with the insurance, let's include the engineering company, how about that? You want to do it, Mr. Noah? You mean your motion to reflect that?
I don't care.
You don't care? He doesn't care. I mean, we're gonna be transparent, let's be transparent.
Okay.
What, the motion for the insurance and the engineering company?
Yeah, we can do that.
You can do that?
Well, you have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, we had a second by Commissioner Sanders.
And I'm in my, my second to reflect what we said.
He amended his motion, she's amending her second.
Uh-huh.
This is just on this kind of insurance, whatever insurance, workers' comp, or whatever it was, Padwells, talk to them now.
Okay, and I'll be engineer, okay?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, where are we at? Lost my train of thought here. We still got, what, five minutes?
Yeah, three minutes according to Verizon.
But Verizon's been down a lot.
That's why I said according to Verizon.
All right, Mike, spit out a couple of yours.
I talked to the clerk, and she says she has no report, so, declared that, I don't know, I mean, we could, it's okay if I try and squeeze in the opening of the things, or you'd rather just wait a couple of minutes, tell them?
Can you open all those up in two minutes?
No, I'm not that good, you know? I'm not Pierce, I can't read and cut that fast, so, you know?
Might lose some digits.
Yeah, there's always some other parts, so, um-
Now, you can't talk as fast as Alan, he can talk Russian.
Hey, that's a sensitive topic.
I guess we'll start with your report, if that's okay with the Chairman?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Want somebody to report?
Do a couple of islands anyway.
Okay, item number one, at, at the July 3rd meeting, while announcing the names of the companies that responded to the TDC Professional Executive Services RFQ, I mistakenly stated that Ms. Laura Graham of Forgotten Coast Management Incorporated was fired as the previous TDC Administrative Assistant. To correct the record, Ms. Graham resigned from that position. Ms. Graham plans to respond to the new RFQ that is due on August 17th, and will be open at your August 21st, regular meeting. Nerd project update, oh, Friday, Friday, okay, so, the East Point Fishing Pier bathroom building is complete, however, there's an issue with adequate water pressure to the building, and there's no power to the building. General contractor and the plumbing contractor are working on a solution. Duke Energy has started a design phase, and after power has been restored to the residents that were affected by the East Point Fire, I will ask that power to the bathroom is given, given priority. Commissioner Jones was with me at that site, at the Indian Creek site, and Commissioner Parrish was at Lombardi, so I don't know, Commissioner Jones, do you want to, is there anything else you want to add to that one?
No, I, I think you've covered it, it's, uh, there are some things that are gonna have to try with the water pressure, but between the contractor that's doing it for the state, on behalf of the county, and between East Point Water and Sewer, I think we can get that word out.
Great. B, Indian Creek Boat Ramp Project is substantially completed, there's still some safety fencing that has to be installed, along with some landscaping, I estimate a 30-day completion date for that project. I really like that ramp, Commissioners, that, that's nice work up there, that floating dock is really, really nice, too. Again, Commissioner Jones, any additional comments?
I, I would like to state, just for the public record, we know as a county that there are some other dock issues there that I wasn't aware of when we started, for the ones that, and it was part of the deal when the county got the land from Mr. Bob Allen. There was, there were crabbers, six total, that were already using docks there and paying a monthly fee, and I had the dock repaired on one side, and I thought that was the only dock, and it wasn't the only dock. Well, then, we've been waiting for the state to kind of get out of the way, so we don't put anything where it's not supposed to be. So, we had an opportunity while we're there, several of the crabbers were there on the property, to assure them that as soon as the state gets out of the way, we're gonna finish everything up there, and get it back to where it needs to be, with the funds that's been generated from their rental of those docks.
Thank you, sir. Item C, there's been significant progress at Lombardi, the state calls that Waterfront Park. All of the museum building structural issues have been corrected, and installation of the roof will, will start, I should say, should start today, and that Mason did an excellent job, by the way. The first layer of the rip ramp that protects the septic and drain field has also been installed, there's another layer that will be added at a later date. Footers for the wraparound deck, the pavilion, and the connection from the ADA parking platform to the observation pier will start at the end of the month. About a week after that starts, there'll be access to the boat ramp, and the observation pier should be available for access not too long after that. Chairman Parrish, you have any additional?
Well, just clarification, on the boat ramp, which is questions that we are frequently asked, two weeks, if the weather permits, three weeks, the boat ramp should be open.
Yeah.
So, I want to put that out there for the public, so that they know, and visiting the site with Mike on Friday, it, there has been significant progress made, it's looking a lot better out there.
Oh, yeah.
And I think when the project is complete, that the, the public will be very surprised at, at the overall improvements that have been made out there.
I was telling the Chairman, I think, once it's completed, what we can vision is, besides the kids that live in the county, schools from outside the county, especially ones that don't have day, daily water access coming, and understanding how this works, and then sitting on a pavilion, and, you know, being able to see it, and-
Well, that's-
With, with the videos, and, yeah, I think it's-
Yeah, that's, that's the vision, I think, that's pretty much the vision that we all have.
Yes, yes.
That we all have.
One, one point of clarification, everything is being wired and done up, but they will not be buying the equipment out of the grant, for the, the displays, and a few other little items, so we'll have to figure that out as a county, but everything else will be complete, the structure will be complete, all the wiring will be complete, two new AC units, I mean, they're, they're doing a good job with it, it's taking a while, but, but we're gonna move forward with it.
That's good.
We will.
I know everybody will be glad about the boat ramp, though.
Absolutely. We'll hold up and go with our 11 o'clock.
Yes, sir, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance that will amend your current gain time calculations. Your current gain time ordinance was enacted in 1989, based on Florida Statute 951.21, which is the same statute that governs gain time today, 29 years later, except the statute has been modified and updated during the course of that 29-year period. The purpose of this ordinance is to make your current gain time calculations consistent with the current ordinance, and before we get started with public comment, let me read the caption of the ordinance into the record. This is an ordinance in Franklin County, Florida, granting a commutation of time for good conduct of county prisoners, and an extra good time allowance for meritorious conduct or exceptional industry, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Any public comment? Major Summerhill, did you have any comment on behalf of the Sheriff's Department that you wanted to present? This is not necessary, this is-
No, I don't think, it's Major Summerhill, I'm the jail administrator at the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, I had become aware of this, I think it was actually 2017, I think, when the update come out with the Florida statute, and it had been 29 years since we brought this back before the board, and so, I, the, I drafted up a letter to Mr. Schuler, and we talked about it, and he put it in the ordinance, you know, to, to come before you, and that way, we can get it, the letter reflects directly what the, uh, the 951 statute, Florida statute says, it goes right along with it, the exact same word and all.
No, that's correct, and I have circulated this ordinance over to the Sheriff for having his team to review, including Major Summerhill, and, and it does come before you with the, the Sheriff's endorsement.
And I'll also, real quick, I talked to Jerry Patterson, and he said, you know, you're basically just following Florida statute.
That's correct.
Nothing above, beyond that, uh, just bringing the ordinance up to date.
Yes, sir, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Pleasure.
Um, sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, seconded by Commissioner Jones to adopt the policy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, a motion carries.
That concludes the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, what's your next item on the agenda?
Next item on the agenda, all right, thank you for coming in today. Uh, let's see where we're at. Ten AM RFQ for Order and Services, Franklin County.
Okay, so what we're gonna do first is the county audit. And I'm just gonna make, uh, state the names because there's, this is no, no pricing here, this is RFQ, okay? So, let me clear with scissors, okay. So, again, we're doing, uh, for the county audit, you have a response from James Moore, Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, they are out of Tallahassee, Florida, James Moore. And you have a proposal from Carl Riggs Ingram, they are out of Panama City Beach. Carl Riggs Ingram. I shouldn't have to open this any further. You've got EFPR Group, CPAs, they're out of Jupiter, Florida. EFPR Group. You have, uh, Roberson and Associates, and they are out of Port St. Joe, Florida. Roberson, Roberson and Associates. And finally, you have Purvis Gray and Company, also CPAs, and they are out of Tallahassee, Florida. Sarasota, Florida, Gainesville and a couple, yeah. But they have their local offices in Tallahassee, Florida, Purvis Gray and Company. And I think that ends the group for the county audit. So, we're gonna switch here. And we're gonna start the hospital audit. And some of the names are gonna be the same, just some, James Moore, again, they're out of Tallahassee, Florida, James Moore. CPA and consultant. This group is different, they've, they've been on the hospital only, it's Blue and Company LLC, they're out of Louisville, Kentucky. So, Blue and Company LLC, Louisville, Kentucky. Pronounce this correctly, Draffin and Tucker LLP, they are out of Albany, Georgia.
What the name, that first?
Dr- D-R-A-F-F-I-N, Draffin and Tucker LLP. Okay, I'm just gonna, it's W-I-P-F-L-I-L-L-P. I think that's, their lettering is their name, they, they are out of Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Whoa.
Our, our, our ads here go a long way, don't they?
Yeah.
W-I-P-F-L-I, CPAs and consultants.
In a net.
And finally, for the hospital, are, again, Carl Riggs and Ingram, and they are at Panama City Beach. That's their local office at least. Okay, and those-
And Mr. Chairman, the, the action of the board, you'll remember, there's a, by statute, there's an audit review committee, so the board action would need to refer these RFQs to the Audit Review Committee.
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we turn it over to the Review Committee for a recommendation back to the court.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, a motion carries.
Come on that review, who's doing the review?
I think the Review Committee is all your constitutional officers, uh, Jones represents the board, uh, I'm sorry, they were asking, who's on the Review Committee, all the, all the constitutional officers?
The Review Committee consists at this time of seven members that you've appointed, you have the ability to appoint more members if you choose, but your current, uh, members are one of the constitutional officers, each one of the five, or they're representatives. Commissioner Jones as a representative from the county commission and H.D. Cannington, uh, from the hospital because of the hospital RFQ issues.
So, shall we remember?
And I would ask that Michael maybe coordinate getting my committee together.
Okay.
Since my office sits on it, it might just be better for-
Yeah, that's what the clerk and I were just discussing.
Okay, make a note of that, thank you. I will, oh, you know me, you too. By the time I walk out the door, all right, so the-
Take care of that, I hear you say that, take care of that.
Yeah, I didn't mean to do it like that.
Whitney's gonna stop coming to these meetings.
Yes, she sure will. Okay, so what we have now is the seal bid for the derelict vessel, really is a derelict vessel. We're down to one because of some of the issues we've discussed over the, um, last few meetings, and apparently I-
There should be two, should be two. The one in Caribou, or East Point something, we couldn't do nothing with it, there should be two, one in Tucker Creek, one in-
And I asked Marcus, morning, he said, one, I have to go back there and see. Why, I know there was some-
One with registration on it, so they were not able to get the process of words for-
That wasn't one with the legal issues, though, so, yeah, I know there was one with the registration where they said had a legal issue with it, but I thought that was one of the three, not one of the two, okay.
There is only one.
So, there is only one, it's actually only one here, I'll have to find out why, you know, there's only one, I, I'm like you all, I thought it was two. Um, anyway, so there's one here, Commissioners, this company is, just a letter of reference, see what they have outside here. Yeah, Morgan Marine Salvage and Recovery, they're out of Freeport, Florida. And for the one vessel, they have three thousand nine hundred, thirty-nine hundred, three thousand nine hundred even.
They have a bid bond, Mike?
Check. And Whitney, if you don't mind, would you ask Mark just to verify, yes or no? Well, what it was, um-
Which, which boats are you, which derelict vessel referring to?
Yeah. And he's gonna put me at last-
Well, I should.
They have the, they have the liability insurance and they have the workman's comp certificate. So, I don't necessarily see a bid bond.
That's a ridiculous-
Well, I, I don't know how it was advertised yet, I just know, that's just something we'll have to look at as part of the review.
And see if it was recorded or not. But, that is Morgan Marine Salvage and Recovery, again, out of Freeport, Florida. And, I'm sorry?
Oh, Freeport, I thought you said-
Is that coming back, is that going to a committee and coming back with a recommendation, or we moving forward with that?
Being its lowest bid, I mean, I'm sorry, the seal bid, I think we'll have to go with the lowest bid.
Right.
But, I, I mean, I'm sure Mark will review it, uh, and if he needs a committee, he'll add, add, but, um-
But don't they, don't we need a bid bond?
I'm sorry, sir?
Don't we need a bid bond?
Unless it was waived for some reason, I know in the past sometimes for smaller projects, it hasn't been required, I just, I've not seen the advertisements, I don't hope it's required or not in this case, I just-
And the other is Honda Enterprises, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, you had a second one?
Yeah, there were two, yes.
Okay.
Honda Enterprises, oh, I'm sorry, sir, that's why you were asking that question, now I understand, we got sidetracked. And their bid is six thousand dollars for the same vessel. And, and Whitney just reminded me, there were two, and, and FWC had legal issues with one of the boats. And I did announce that at my last, it wasn't my last report, now. You're gonna ask me, um, which one, and I'll have to tell you and go back and check, but yes. And so, they have to, they forward a bunch of, uh, other documents, reference letters. And Whitney's telling me that Mark said he did not require a bid bond.
Oh, okay. It's probably under-
Where's Honda looking, Rick?
This one, Funiac Springs, Florida, had to check there for a second. So-
What do we need, a motion sent back to Mark?
A motion to have, have Mark review the bids, um, and then he'll determine which one of the two bids is the lowest responsive and responsible bid.
Pleasure. A motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley to send it, to do that, seconded by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, I have some. Michael, um, I don't wanna try and mess up the process here, but, uh, Mr. Curran can come to me about two weeks ago with two different vessels in the East Point Channel.
Mm-hmm.
And he said one was gonna be a problem, but the other was something they were gonna take care of, so they say now there's a problem with that one as well.
No, 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 this was, what he addressed you, is for future cycle of, of funding, this is for the, uh, all the cycle we were doing.
That's good, but at some point, if somebody's boat is tore up and or sunk, who's gonna be liable for it?
Well, FWC is the only ones, this is a FWC grant, and they make a determination whether or not that they can pick it up. So, that would be a discussion we would need to have with FWC about liability.
It's all good.
And how much is theirs and how much would be ours, depending on where the boat is.
We do have a motion, seconded on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, a motion carries.
Okay.
Ms. Amy Ham Kelly, plan his own report.
There we go.
I can't see it.
Yes?
Is it gonna warm up?
It's yellow looking, Amy.
Uh-huh.
It's yellow looking or something.
Well, that's better than-
It'll, it'll come clearer in just a minute. Okay, this morning, um, we have a critical shoreline application, there was a recommendation for approval, it was unanimous. It was a consideration of a request to construct a single-family private dock located at Lot Ten, Alligator Point subdivision, also known as six, um, fifteen sixty-nine Alligator Drive, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed walkway will be twenty-four foot by four foot and, um, have an eight by twelve uncovered, um, terminal platform with a nine by seven dock. Um, applicant is exempt from DEP and Core permitting, the request was submitted, um, by Sandra and Bill McMillan, and there is a house on the Gulf side of the property. This is probably one of the smallest docks on the harbor. The house is on the, the Gulf side here, and the dock will go over here. Scroll this in for you.
Pleasure, Board.
Ame. Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, a motion carries.
Okay. This morning, we also have a commercial site plan review, there was a recommendation for approval contingent upon rezoning. The rezoning, um, came before the Board of County Commissioners, um, last year, and, um, it was tabled due to needing a, a better site plan. But at the planning and zoning, there's a contingency, um, on the site plan, um, upon the rezoning happening. It's a consideration of a request for a commercial site plan review for a twenty-six lot RV park on a one-point-eight acre parcel, line in section eleven, township non-south, range eight west, also known as six-twenty-three, US Highway ninety-eight west, Appalachia Cola, Franklin County, Florida. This will be contingent upon finalizing a public hearing for a rezoning of the Board of County Commissioners tabled August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Re- uh, request submitted by Char- Charlotte Russell Schneider, she's the applicant.
Okay, uh, when this project originally came up, I asked for an engineered site plan. They brought back a survey, which is exactly what they presented it the first time, was a survey. Uh, we already got, uh, issues in the county with approving a rezoning, and it's, once the rezoning is done, then we didn't approve what the person wanted to do. Uh, there's an issue there, too, and we're still dealing with that issue. I don't wanna rezone something only contingent of approving a site plan that is not an engineered site plan. If you, if the request of the applicant, if they want their property rezoned with the understanding that they're promised nothing but the rezoning, is one thing. To ask for a rezoning contingent upon being able to do a commercial, uh, approving a commercial site plan that was done by a surveyor and not an engineering firm, uh, I can't go with that myself, that's my personal opinion. Now, having said that, the applicant may not want to spend money on doing an engineered site plan if they don't get rezoned. On the other hand, if you rezon it and they don't present us with a commercial site plan, I mean, a, a engineered site plan, then I'm gonna be opposed to it. So, it's got the board in a catch twenty-two, and we're already in a catch twenty-two in a previous, uh, action that was taken by the board. So, I'm not, myself, I'm not gonna vote for rezoning the man's property based on a site plan done by a surveyor. It doesn't show the septic on it, it doesn't show what the roads are gonna be made out of, all it is is a drawing, it shows that he can do slips. If it's not engineered, I'm not sure the road that they're showing going into the, the, uh, the road drawn up on this surveyed site plan is even wide enough to accommodate the RVs, because it's not done by an engineer, it's done by a surveyor. I mean, uh, there's a lot of issues with this, this project, and I, I thought I'd make myself clear the first time this project came up. And I understand it, you, you know, how does the board want to proceed, is what I'm trying to say. Uh, if you'd like to come forward and speak on the issue, that's fine, come forward, state your name for the record. Uh, I just don't understand how we can make a decision based on a survey. Uh, I, I just don't see that.
My name is Dell Schneider. I wasn't aware that the site plan needed to be engineered. It's, everything is according to the stats, every lot is twelve hundred square feet, the road widths are eighteen, it's a DOT right away coming in. Um, if you approve it, I'll have an engineered drawing for the final, for the next meeting, but, uh-
So, you wanna move forward with the rezoning of the property?
Yes, please.
Without a contingency of your promise to be able to do what you're wanting to do? Do you understand what I'm trying to tell you? I don't wanna rezone your property and then you don't get the approval that you want, now you got your property rezoned into something other than-
We, we would have-
I mean, we're already in this, we're already in a fiasco with another individual on, over the same issue. Have you got an opinion, Attorney? How, how do we, I mean-
Yes, sir, um, my recommendation would be not to link a site plan with the issue of holding a public hearing at which you don't promise to rezone this property, we need to correct the record. All you can do, if it is the will of the board, uh, to hold a public hearing to consider rezoning, all you can do is hold, vote to hold a public hearing and then there'll be a public hearing, you'll take testimony, you'll get public comment, and then you'll consider whether to rezone. But we can't promise it just because he asked for it, he'll get it, all you can promise is, if, if it's the will of the board, you'll hold a public hearing, that's all you can do. But regardless of what the board's decision is on whether to hold the public hearing to consider the rezoning, I think that you need to reject the, uh, P and Z recommendation that would approve the site plans as it's been submitted contingent on a rezoning. So, if, if it's the will of the board, you would have a motion to reject the recommendation approving the site plan with the contingencies that has, has been stated to you on the rezoning, and your only motion would be to move forward with a public hearing to consider the rezoning. And that is if the applicant wants to proceed forward with the rezoning, as has been explained to him here this morning.
I could've had the, the, the drawing engineered stamped, that wouldn't have been a problem, I was unaware that it needed a stamp for the, for the drawing itself.
I think it was asked for the first time you came here, if you look back at the board, if you look back at the board minutes, I think it's in there, that's what I asked for.
Mr. Schneider, would you like them to table this matter so you can go back to the engineer and submit an engineered drawing as, as has been discussed this morning? Would you like to do that?
Well, if we had need two meetings to change the zoning, I mean,
Yeah, the, the process-
I don't, I don't feel that if we change the zoning and we come back with the drawings, I'm getting, we're gonna have a huge problem with it. So, I mean, that's really, it's really what we think is the highest and best use for the property, so, if we continue with the rezoning, I'll bring a, I'll bring a stamped drawing for the, for the next meeting.
That's, that's the only issue, is if we-
I got you.
If you ask the board to rezone your property, now you're linked into, these are the only things you can do under that zoning. You don't have your current zoning no more, I mean, I want you to understand the process.
Sure, I understand.
And then when you get, if you get a rezoning from the board, which is no guarantee, but if you get a rezoning of the board, then we'll have to deal with the site plan, we cannot link the two together.
That's correct.
Because your site plan right now shows me nothing, I mean, it doesn't show me vegetated, nothing, nothing landscape, it doesn't show me what the roads are made of, it doesn't show me what kind of septic system you got, it shows a green space and a septic space, but it don't show me nothing else. And I don't think the, the board should be approving anything without having the facts. And we don't have that without an engineered drawing, that's the point I tried to make last time. I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm saying-
I, I understand what you're coming-
You gotta, you gotta bait, you got a bait and tackle store right beside you, across the street, you got a public boat ramp. I'm not saying it's not a good location, what I'm saying is, we need to know what you're putting there, what it's gonna look like, is it going to, the survey, is that going to be able to be used under a certified, uh, engineered site plan? And an engineered site plan will show all these questions that I'm asking right now, right now I have no answer to all these questions, without that. I'm asking right now, right now I have no answer to all these questions, without that, but I don't want to rezone your property, and then when you have an engineer plan done, and it doesn't match up to what the surveyor says you can do, that's what the surveyor says, that's not what the engineer says, now you've done rezoned your property, and now you're locked into this zoning category when you had this zoning category, you understand what I'm saying, it's not, it's not as simple, and you cannot approve a, a site plan and a rezoning all at the same time, the two are, are not intertwined, that's what's wrong with us now, that's why we got the controversy that we have now, that we're currently in litigation over, because we rezoned the man's property but wouldn't let him do what he wanted to do, so then, now we're in litigation behind that, that's also why I asked you earlier to give me some time on this, because we're in litigation with other issues...
Well, it's...
That I'm trying to figure out, but everything's pushing forward, and, and it's pushing forward in the wrong manner that I cannot vote for.
I got you, well, it's been a year since the last time we came up on it.
I understand, but the controversies are still arising, not the one that you've generated, other controversies that we're still trying to figure out.
Why don't we go forward with the rezoning, and then, in the meantime, I'll, I'll bring in a, a stamped drawing, I mean, my engineer's been down there a half dozen times, and we weren't aware that we needed to stamp the drawing for...
Well, the first thing is rezoning your property, that's the first thing, you don't have to bring in anything for the rezoning.
I got you.
But if the board gives you a rezon, they're not giving you a rezoning based on what you're wanting to do. Once you get the rezoning, then you come back and submit all these site plans and stuff that shows everything correctly.
You want to table it?
Huh?
The zoning, I was looking, I'm looking for zoning right here, to see what the zoning is that he's wanting to change it to.
He's wanting to go to C three.
You'd be better off to table it and...
It was C four and a half, he's wanting...
Charlie would like to table it.
I don't know what the current zoning is.
So we would like tables?
It's C four, and he wants to go to C three.
You want a table?
And, and let me, let me re-clarify, if we bring in a, a stamped drawing and then
apply for a zoning change, Mr. Schuler, is that the way we do it, or do we have to go for the site plan after we have the zoning change?
That's the whole controversy that we're in now, what, what is procedure?
Well... I, 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 I've heard the board's will here, and I, I think that Mr. Schneider is, is, has asked at this point to table this matter, so my recommendation is to table it, and then I will get with Mr. Schneider after the meeting, and then he and I'll have a conversation and figure out a path forward for him in presenting this project to the board, because I've heard the will of the board, and I, I think I know which direction you, you seem to be going, in my opinion, and then I'll have a conversation with Mr. Schneider, and we'll get him a path forward to, uh, get him before you in a proper manner to consider his request.
Okay, if they don't have a problem, I'll make a motion to table it then, if they don't have a problem.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Um, aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We have another commercial site plan approval, it's a recommendation for approval unanimously, consideration of a request for a commercial site plan review to construct a nine thousand one hundred and eighty square foot building that will be a family dollar store, located on one, um, point five four acres, it's, um, within a four point eight eight acre parcel total, lying in section thirty-six, Township Eight South, Range Seven West, also known as one ninety-eight U S Highway ninety-eight, um, East Point, Franklin County, Florida, request submitted by Eliana Martinez, agent for Lafayette Land, Inc.
This the old nursing home side of the...
It's a portion of that site.
Okay.
Make a family dollar?
Yes, sir, they're basically gonna utilize one point five four acres in the north, northeast, um, section.
So it's gonna be a big family dollar?
It's about nine thousand one hundred and eighty square feet, it's, it's...
Ooh, it's gonna be big then.
Um, I, this building is about ten thousand square feet, so...
Tell them to bring the warehouse so they can get some work.
Where's this going?
At the old nursing home site.
Okay.
Across from Bangkok.
Okay.
It's a good place, ain't it?
But if you notice, it has a survey, and then it has an engineered set of plans.
Amy, how many, if I, mind this question, Chairman, how many, I'm, take time, how many parking spaces are there?
They're required to have forty-five point nine, but they have forty-eight.
Okay.
Parking place?
Yep.
Um, meets all the setback requirements, um, parking, they have forty-eight spaces, forty-five point nine is required, um, they have a stormwater that's proposed in the southern, um, portion of the property, um, they, water and sewer is available, yes.
That'd be behind it within...
Water and sewer is available, um, they only need to pay the impact fees, that came from, um, Billy Fuentes, um, they have loading and unloading area in the rear of the building, and there's no wetlands associated with this one point five four acre parcel, and...
The, the reason I ask about the, the parking, I mean, is it might not seem possible when you look at the, the Dollar General down the street, but when it gets busy, it's sometimes hard to even park there, with as many spots as they have, so that's, that's why I was asking.
Pleasure, Board?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Likely, any further discussion?
Yeah, that, 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 what they call, that McDonald's gonna be beside it?
That's what we were requesting, why not? Don't ever know, this is what we envisioned these point to be at many years ago, y'all remember? As a commercial area.
It's growing.
Yes, growing.
It is.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. We're back to Mr. Rump, are we going with the store coordinator, Ms. Whitney?
Well, good morning, um, so the information the guests have are from Alan's report, and I changed a little bit to make it sound like I'm actually talking instead of Alan. And so, there might be a little confusion for y'all, but you, Commissioners, you should have the correct one that I'm reading, so, number one, inform the board that Mr. Will, Mr. Will Kendrick's assistant, ass- assisted, assistants, FEMA has sent a revised PW two two eight for the county to sign, Alan reviewed the document and then had Tress sign it for Pam Brunell, as Pam is out. The revised PW drops the estimated cost of the Alligator Point road repair to two point six six million, but it adds back the one thousand feet of sheet pile. What FEMA did was reduce their estimated cost of the sheet pile, but the estimated cost doesn't matter since it's going out to bed. What mattered is getting the thousand feet of sheet pile back in, Michael or myself can provide a copy of the signed PW for the board file, the project is still, still is in the design phase, but at least we finally have the construction funds.
Let me comment on that, please, Mr. Chairman, uh, Alan called me all the way from North Carolina to talk to me about it, let me know that Congressman Dunn's office had helped us with this, the original money was supposed to be three point two million dollars, but that was not the problem, we're not worried about the dollar amount, we were worried about the footage on the linear sheet pile wall, they had it down to two hundred and fifty feet, so the important thing is that we're back up to the, the thousand feet that we need to do down at Alligator Point for that sheet pile wall, so that's a good thing.
Okay, number two, board action to approve four task orders so that Pam Brunell's consultant, C D Maguire, can assist the county in getting reimbursed for the four PWs that Alan has been working on, Alan has checked with Aaron, and the four task orders can be pa- paid out of professional services, the task order for PW two two eight is approximately five thousand, because I recommend the consultant assist the county in putting out the construction bids, because Alan doesn't want any problems from FEMA when we seek reimbursement, this is especially important because Alan expects the construction bids to be in the three million dollar range, the other three task orders are all fifteen hundred dollars each and deal with the closeout of Gulf Shore Boulevard, the reimbursement for the Alligator Point traffic signals and the reimbursement for the engineering and design fees for reconstructing the Alligator Point Road.
Pleasure, the Board?
Ame. Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, number three, board action to approve the F D O T agreements for the airport master plan update, this is a required FAA project, and they are providing a hundred percent of the funds, Avcom will do the master plan update, the update will be the board's opportunity to plan the future of the airport, and it will be a basis for the future F D O T and FAA funding for projects at airport, included in this agreement is a letter signed by the chairman to authorize Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates to perform an independent fee estimate for the airport master plan update.
Pleasure, the Board?
Ame.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Number four, inform the board that Mr. Jimmy Petronas's chief of staff called Alan last week with an update on how the county could seek reimbursement for expenses that were incurred in cleaning up after the fire, the most surprising step is the first step, the county will have to ask for a legislative appropriation from the next year's legislator, Alan told Mr. Ryan West that he did not think that was likely, Alan bluntly said that by next year, the fire would be old news, and if the county ever seeks a legislative appropriation, it will be for something bigger, not some few thousand dollars of fuel the county used in hauling debris to the landfill, Mr. West said that Mr. Petronas would support the request if the county wanted to submit documentation, Alan said to be honest in that he was slightly put out that we, the county, would have to ask next year's legislator for reimbursement for something that they should be offering to pay this year, but it is a board decision.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm just reading what was wrote.
I have to, I have to say, I remember being told by Alan that when we were all in the midst of the fire and everything, that, um, if I'm not mistaken, CFO Petronas came down here and said, "We will help you to get back right, whatever you need to, you know, whatever you need to have, we need to do it," and I was being told, "He's not."
Petronas himself told us that.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Keep the ticket, I mean, that's why I asked for...
Keep a ticket, keep a receipt.
Violence and everything else, and they, you know, we'd be guaranteed this money back, and...
Well, I, I'm gonna make a motion, if Mr. Chairman don't mind, I'm gonna make a motion that we write the CFO, uh, Jimmy Petronas, and reiterate his willingness to refund Franklin County.
Okay.
And that we're holding him to it.
Okay.
And ask for refunding of the money.
Sir.
And that's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Can I ask you a question? Since we talked about that, we need to get together and act the legislature to make some kind of law, where we, where small counties, what, we can't afford to just go in there and do everything, but it should be a law, where small kind of like this, when, when disaster happen like, we shouldn't have to go through all this, I mean, it should be an automatic deal or something, and it, it's something, I don't know, uh, get we have to do it by legislation, or, or what, I don't know.
Yes, that would have to actually come from the part of legislature.
So, I'll make a mention at the end for us to try to get that, 'cause this don't make no sense, you got to go through all this and go through that.
You want me to add that to my motion?
Yeah.
That we, we ask?
Yeah.
That to happen?
Yeah, 'cause it, you know...
I'll add my motion to reflect that, yeah.
'Cause we didn't act for this, and we don't have the money to...
No.
And no, no other small county.
Well, and, and Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, we're gonna, we're gonna interact here right here, it's just like a, it's just like the Board of County Commissioners, we came together last Monday afternoon, and we voted to spend two hundred and four thousand dollars temporarily, I know, but Capital Area couldn't come up with the money, nobody else offered the money, to come up with enough money to bring these trailers up from Homestead for these people in East Point, do you, and like I said, we don't need to k- kudos for it, we, that's our job, but the thing about it is, it's like Mr. Noah says at that meeting, we didn't make this problem, those people over in East Point didn't make that problem, what can we do to rectify the problem, there's nothing you can do unless you ask for legislation to change that and to put the monkey on somebody else's back, and not to allow them four years to, before they have to even worry about paying a claim, or something like that, these people are, are hurt and displaced now, not four years from now, and so that, I mean, that's what I'm looking at, I'm looking at, we, you know, and that's the reason why I agree to put that in my motion, Mr. Noah, because we need something done, because your smaller counties does not have the tax base and the, 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 the resources that larger counties have, we don't have a hundred and seventy-five million dollars in reserves.
Right.
You know, we don't have that, so it, it needs to be done, but anyway.
I agree, we, we, if it hadn't been for us, they wouldn't have faced the real today, but they still sitting over here hammering us like we not doing nothing.
Another thing is, some of the small counties wouldn't have had that two hundred some thousand, I believe, yeah, replace, some of them...
Yeah, and we ain't got our money back yet, you know, so...
Let the record reflect, Commissioner Sanders has amended a motion, Commissioner Jones has amended a second.
The board's already voted on that motion, that, that motion is closed, you'd actually have to have a new motion procedurally.
Well, I'm, okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we go out for legislation to...
Okay, I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Likely, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion?
Chairman.
Yes.
We also, as, as a commission, should be able to present this kind of information to fact and to the small county coalition, especially when it comes to, because they help address legislative issues on our behalf, um, so we, we need also do that.
That's why I was just asking to be sure, if, if it's a meeting, then I think we should, any motion include it, we go through fact and small county coalitions to help us with this, this legislation.
Stay on top of it though, y'all, because, I mean, I've been there...
We, we wanna do it ourselves, for fact.
Stay on, stay on top of it, stay on top of it, because compared to the big picture, you got all these needs, these larger counties, and we sitting right down here here, see what I'm saying, so stay on top of it, I'm not gonna be here.
Will you amend your motion?
We've already, the board's already voted on that, I'm sorry. I know what to do, that's okay. He, he's your...
You have not voted?
Have not.
Okay, don't worry.
You can amend the motion.
I didn't think we had voted on that one.
Well, can, can, can't we do that between fact and, and ourselves too, to make sure we on top of it, we, I, I wanna do it with both of us, so fact, fact will put you on the bottom of the list.
I guess the question we had, Mr. Noah, that come up is, we're writing a letter and doing a present to him, but who are we gonna do it to?
That's right.
You're surely not gonna send it to the governor's office, the Petronas's office, you know what I mean, who are you presenting it to, that's what I was trying to...
Well, I can, and I tell you what, the governor needs to have a copy of this letter, whatever's written.
Yeah, 'cause he's been dying.
Uh-huh.
He know what we talking about, him and Jimin, all of them, oh, they been here.
Yep.
Put them on work, let them, let them honor some of them stuff they said they were gonna do it, ain't done it.
You would have my vote here.
Yeah, so let, let the record reflect, Mr. Likely amended his motion.
Did I make the second?
You did.
Okay, I made my second too.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for keeping us straight and clear, Attorney.
No, I'm doing the best I can.
Hey, go ahead.
Number five is save the date, August ninth at ten a.m., the state-funded improvements at Island View Park will be completed and offered dedication, this is a county park, so your county staff is arranging the dedication with the help of Duck Hathaway Trust for Public Lands, the dedication will be at the park Thursday, August ninth, and I will be providing you all more details in the near future.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, Whitney, if you don't mind, could you take and put this on the website?
Absolutely.
As an informational piece, where people will see that, because I've had a lot of people that is waiting for this thing to be opened, and they're just so happy that we're having it, so...
It look good.
Yeah.
Look real good.
It's very good looking, happy.
I ain't played for that.
Yeah.
Any other, oh, anything from the Commissioners, from Ms. Whitney?
You too.
Thank you, good job.
Good job, yeah.
Next on our agenda. Mr. Michael Morone.
That's me, and let me correct another issue, that's why Commissioner Jones is elected official, and I'm just staff, so, with the bids, we did open, Commissioner, the, the rest of the ones for the ones in East Point.
Okay.
Okay, the ones prior to that is already making, being, taking care of the ones that we, we talked about in, uh...
Of the river here?
Yes, of the river, that's...
This is totally separate?
This is, this is the newest... This, this is, this is the newest, uh, actually funding from FWC.
Okay.
But I was correct in saying that the one that FWC took off the list, that's on them. They found registrations on it, so they go through, they track that and try and find the owner and, and, and kinda have them remove it, okay? So, I needed to fix that. There we go, attorney should have laughed at me, but that's all right. Uh, item number three, if there's nothing else, board action to authorize the chairman's signature on a letter stating that Franklin County supports Opportunity Florida and intensive paid if one thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cent investment dues. Opportunity Florida uses this letter of support as part of their application package for Department of Economic Opportunities Regional Rural Development Grant, which helps OF staff attend educational events and receive technical assistance throughout the year.
Motion to approve the letter and the payment.
Sir. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item four, early June at East Point Recovery Efforts, Tim, Mr. Tim Center of, of Capital Area Community Action Agency was seeking designation to allow his agency to purchase the FEMA trailers in Homestead. That's before he was rejected and we had to buy them. In order to assist, Mr. Center asked that the county send a letter of support informing FEMA that Community Action was working in partnership with the county to get these FEMA trailers. Board action to ratify the chairman's signature on that letter of support.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion approved.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, we addressed already with Ms. Belcher. Item six, at your July third meeting, the board opened and read aloud seven responses to advertise sealed bids requests for the Gulf Shore Boulevard relocation project. Of the seventh, Mr. Clay Kennedy of Duberry states that Pygott Asphalt and Site Work LLC is the lowest responsive bidder. Duberry staff has verified that their FDOT letter, Pygott's FDOT letter, states that they meet the prequalification requirements and has discussed the bid amount with Mr. Rusty Pygott to make sure that he's comfortable with the bid amount they submitted. This is a FEMA-funded project, PW five nine one. Duberry staff will prepare all of the contract documents and will oversee the construction. Board action toward the Gulf Shore Boulevard relocation project to Pygott Asphalt and Site Work LLC.
Same.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion?
Where they from again?
Pygott.
Madar.
Madar.
Madar?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven, Commissioner Sanders, the Florida Association of Counties has notified the county that due to Commissioner Sanders' resignation from her position on the FAC Board of Directors at the conclusion of the annual conference, they are requesting that we identify a replacement to complete the term, which ends in June of twenty nineteen. The county has thirty days to notify AFC of their appointed replacement. If we don't, then the chairman of FAC can then pick anyone from anywhere.
I make, I make a motion, Mr. Jones?
Yep, second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Jones.
Just give one statement. You gotta stay strong, man, Ricky.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the reason I voted for him, be strong.
Stay strong, and, y'all, this is another thing, I mean, it's just another thing, y'all just, d- there with me.
He'll do good.
He will, but stay strong.
Yes, ma'am.
Speed dial, Ricky, speed dial.
Gotcha.
All right, Mike. You might need to switch chairs or something.
As of, as of November, speed dial.
The, the end of November.
Look out for, look out for the small counties.
That's right.
Be hard, best of the frankly.
Item eight, as the board is aware, on Friday, June twenty-ninth, there was an early morning fire that totally destroyed two apartments and did considerable damage to two other apartments in Leonard Village. Didn't left that out, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Milander, your building official has inspected the units and condemned three of those units. One of the property owners has already contacted staff about debris removal and cleaning up their unit, and staff is in the process of contacting the other two owners. Is the board willing to waive the fees associated with the debris removal permit and the tipping fees once the debris is dropped off at the county landfill? Before we get into this discussion, this was written early last week. Since then, uh, Mr., our building official is informing the insurance company wants to, they're gonna send a structural engineer to see if the, that whole building.
The whole unit.
Unit, not just the units in there, that whole entire, it needs to be condemned.
The whole.
So I would recommend that the board hold off on any decisions, discussion decisions here until we get back from the insurance company and the fire marshal what the results are.
Yeah.
If they got insurance, why would we waive the fees anyway?
That is true.
Now, my, my question with this, and Commissioner Sanders can probably elaborate this, but we, they've been told for a long time that these barracks, when they're destroyed, they can't be built back in the fashion that they are now.
That's right.
They've gotta comply with the new code, so these buildings are not gonna be built back. It's just a big, long barracks with a wall in it, a lot of it's not firewall, I mean, you don't have fire, it's not built to code, it was built during the Count Gordon Johnson days. So there's gonna be major, this ain't gonna just be going there, just put new walls up, put a new roof on, and you got your same apartment.
Yeah.
That ain't work, that ain't, that's not conforming to the new codes and regulations that you gotta comply with these days, and we're seeing it in other parts of the county also. So I just wanna make that statement out there, 'cause we've talked about this for a long time, how these barracks were bought and then subdivided and sold off as apartments or whatever, and, and they don't have no firewalls between the two, two apartments, and, and the addicts are, are common addicts, so if it catches fire, it just goes across the whole barracks, and there's no, there's no way to control that.
And you, and you remember the fire in two thousand and ten that took out the whole row of apartments there? And we had the same situation there, and the, and the concrete and the mortar and all that is so old that when it burns, it just.
Disintegrates.
It, it disintegrates.
Nineteen forty.
Yeah.
So, what, what kinda acts do you need from just a motion and a statement?
No, I, I not even, I mentioned nothing, no action, I just, I need, there's a lot more going on that happened after I wrote this down, so.
And I, I've had numerous, numerous emails and phone calls on this, and to me, I agree with the chairman, that if they have insurance, and it's, insurance is just in the fire marshal, so they need to take care of that. We do it during an emergency setting, like the East Point fire or something like that, but when it's something targeted like that, can't do it.
And, and even with the other one, we all, we already knew the determination that, that it was caused by the, you know what I mean, we knew the cause, there was no further investigation going on before we proceeded either.
Mm-hmm. Well, this is still an investigation.
They move forward, Mr. Jones.
Item number nine, which is, I know it's old news, but I'll tell you anyway, from the board, there was, there, there is a temporary lane closure on the US ninety-eight, Bay Shore Drive today, most of the day, while M. of Tallahassee installs the striping of the crosswalk across the roadway to connect the sidewalks on North and South Bay Shore Drive. Mark is basically telling me, this is, we're getting really close to the end of this project. This project has moved along, commissioners, it really has.
Yeah, they were.
And, well, well, before I do number ten, there's one item that Mark sent me, and let me put that in front of that. Um, he sent an email this morning, good news, the Mill Road paving project is just about complete. There was a twenty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, seventeen cents that was not spent from that project. So I need board action to approve a change order to reduce the contract with Robertson Roberts, and I also need board action to approve and sign the certificate of substantial completion for this project.
Can they be done both together?
I guess I'll, I'll make.
Can they be done both together?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, we can do both together, I'm sorry, I was looking at Commissioner.
I make a motion.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Let's go, I'll go back to my last item. The twenty nineteen Florida Association of Counties calendar photo contest is open. Since the association will turn ninety in twenty nineteen, the theme for the twenty nineteen calendar is Old Florida. For the past few years, the board has requested the TDC to oversee the collection and submission of the pictures for the calendar contest. The submission deadline is Friday, September seventh. Is the board planning or willing on doing the same for the twenty nineteen calendar contest? Let TDC run it?
Uh, Mike, i- in previous years, we, we've been doing up-to-date photographs, and this is old Florida, so somebody needs to go back into the Florida archives and bring out some old pictures of Franklin County that we wanna submit.
Yeah.
Uh, so if it's turned over to the TDC, that needs to be done with that direction.
Don't you think?
Mm-hmm.
Go back in the archives, Tallahassee, go to the archives and, and get some older photographs of, of old Florida, that's what they want.
There's plenty of them up there.
There's plenty of them.
Yeah.
So pleasure to the board on that issue.
Yeah, I make a motion that we do that.
Let TDC do it.
Yeah, direct staff to get it to TDC.
And to look in the archives, the Florida archives, uh, for some old pictures of Franklin
County, uh, back in old Florida days.
You guys employ a walking, talking Florida archive. Mr. Kurten, you know.
Oh, what a compliment.
Mr. Kurten, Commissioner, Mr. Kurten.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders. Second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And that's the end of my report, Commissioner.
Any, any comments for the board, for Mr. Morone?
I have to keep on looking at him.
He's telling us we are a walking archives here. Thanks for the compliment, Mike. Thanks for the compliment.
One, one important thing that you meant out, my, it's for Thursday and Friday. The budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I, I didn't do that, yes.
The money.
On Thursday, well, let me ask it, everyone had, anyone had issues with the link? I know you guys have been in active discussions, so you pretty much know what's in the budget, but I sent out the electronic link yesterday afternoon, did it work for everybody? Good.
I don't know, I haven't checked.
And we start on Thursday at nine, Madam Clerk? Yes, nine o'clock, okay?
And Thursday and Friday at nine?
Yeah, I think Thursday they have it at ten for some reason.
Friday.
Friday's ten, I'm sorry, Thursday's nine.
Yeah, okay.
Thursday's nine o'clock. Do we need a motion for the pocket?
No. The chairman's already made that direction.
There we go.
He, he just directed me while he was talking. That's why I just wanna make sure we're on line, and we've got all the NGOs coming in on Friday. Okay.
Good. Next on the agenda will be, uh, Mr. Shulman County Attorney Report.
I did not submit a written report, but I did wanna give the board and the public an update on the transfer of the ownership of the travel trailers. Uh, the chairman and myself, after lunch today, will be going over, uh, to the tax collector's office, and he will give the public forty-eight live signatures to transfer the titles on those trailers, because the trailer titles first have to be transferred from the government to the county, and then from the county, uh, to Tim Center's group, the Community Action Agency in Tallahassee. Uh, and then Commissioner Sanders, I, I did make sure that they are paying for the, the transfer fees of a total of about four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, once the, the titles are transferred, that will, that ownership transfer will be effective by closing business today, I'm told by the tax collector, and Mr. Center's group will then insure the vehicles as of today, and then they should start the process of assigning and delivering those travel trailers, uh, you know, hopefully as soon as tomorrow, but I don't, I don't know that schedule. All I know is Tim Center told me that they would not, uh, transfer and deliver the trailers to the people that need them until the ownership, uh, was in his company, so we, we working on that post haste. Um, as you know, the, the, I believe the final trailers were delivered on Friday to the county, and we're now having the transfers completed as of Tuesday, so we're acting in a timely manner. Um, another issue, which is also old business for the county, uh, the, the artificial reef applications have been received, they, they actually came to my office, uh, that would have been the weekend just before the fire, and I just, I did not think to bring this up at the last meeting. I know the board has already approved the concept of moving forward, but I would like board action to do two things today. One is just to authorize the chairman's signature on two artificial reef applications, one for DEP, one for the Corps of Engineers. I spoke with Keith Millie with DEP or FWC yesterday, and he believes that these, uh, applications are, uh, complete and accurate, but has asked me to double-check that, so I will be reviewing these this afternoon. Uh, so, but I would like board action for the chairman to sign those two applications, uh, and finances asked that y'all also approve, uh, a manual check for them to be able to write for the application fee, uh, when, when we're notified by DEP exactly how much and to whom to make the check payable to.
Pleasure to the board.
Same. Same.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other?
That's it.
Any question from the board for Mr. Shulman?
Yeah, so you think somebody will be in trailer tomorrow night?
I, I said, I'm hoping that, I, I do not know what Tim Center's schedule is, Commissioner Lockley, I don't.
He's gone to North Carolina.
Tim Center has?
He, yeah, he's gone to North Carolina, looked at some kinda horse trial, some, some kinda horse thing.
He told me he has staff members live in the county today, they, they came down, at least with the signing of, of these, uh, live signatures on the, the title transfers, and they could be here for other purposes, but I do not, I do not know Tim Center's schedule on delivering, all I know is he told me they would not deliver until the title is transferred, so we're putting the ball in their court as of maybe two hours from now.
Well, and if y'all remember, we said that we wanted Tim Center to make that determination who gets what. We didn't wanna be left in the middle of that.
Until he gets title, he can't do that.
Right.
We're gonna work on that.
And he's got him right there, Mr. Chairman.
The, uh, now, now, one of.
Clerk, clerk.
Rick is on the job.
The, uh. A- as far as the delivery of the, the trailers, what I've told EOC when they spoke with me yesterday, uh, there, there was some discussion about EOC getting in the middle of providing land leases between the landowner and area, the Tim Centers group, I've advised them not to do that. If they have a land lease, they give that for the Tim Center, with Tim Center deal with any leases of the trailer and any land leases, because he owns the trailers, uh, in short order, not us, so we don't have any standing to be entering into agreements on where those trailers are going to be located. That's, that really is something that Tim Centers group needs to handle, just so the board knows.[1576.74]
Any comment, any other comments from the board members to Mr. Shulman? If there be enough other comments, we'll move on down to the agenda. Commissioner, comment?
I got, yeah, I got a thing here from them people we talked at the Florida Association of Counties about the phone and stuff.
The AT&amp;T people?
No, it's, uh.
T-Mobile, isn't it?
T-Mobile, the phone, that's the name of it.
Oh, that's the one?
Yeah.
Bigger.
Bigger, Bigger's the phone. But y'all, we having a problem with, uh, telephone jams and everything, they, they in a wrist and then talking to us.
They did, Commissioner, they sent me an email about talking to us, and I told them I would, uh, I would like to schedule a meeting in August. Uh, because, you know, based on what was going on, I said, can we delay that until August? I'm, I'm even sure we have T-Mobile service in the county. I, I'm gonna ask them that first.
Just don't say nothing about T-Mobile.
I thought it was the AT&amp;T.
It just says Bigger's.
They say it all. You told them, baby.
Yeah, somebody called.
I meant when we were talking to them.
Let me clarify, I got a call from someone, an email from somebody in T-Mobile, said they, they met with some of you guys down at the conference. And they'd like to talk to us about, uh, you know, to see what they can do for us, so.
You would.
Yeah, we, yeah, we were trying to talk to them, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they said they got tired with the item.
Okay.
I, it worked talking, then let them talk.
I will.
We ain't paying the gas.
Any other commissioner comment?
I, I've got just one, not for discussion today, but at the next board meeting, I would like for you to put on, uh, the, the agenda underneath your report to speak about possible areas that we could do some, uh, more boat ramps. I would like to see that boat ramp extended in East Point, um, down there by the pavilion and, um, and all that. So, there's something, discussion about that to where we can see it in, in different areas of the county. Michael, maybe get some kind of a map or something to show us the different areas that we might possibly do that.
Okay.
Because, I mean, it's gonna be, it, we, we gonna have to do it, because if we don't do it, then people's gonna be very limited on where they can put their boat's boat ramp, so.
They're presently in the design phase for Old Faradoc Ramp Two, correct?
Yes.
You know that's correct?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, but yeah, that does need to happen along with, hopefully one day getting the channel dredged so the water's deep enough to use it there, so.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna get that down. Y'all?
Any other commissioner comment?
Commissioner Chairman, can I follow up one thing? I just thought about what you said this morning. Can I get the board at least to consider at the next meeting, we could, we could make a decision to get some plaques done for these contractors?
You hadn't done that yet?
No, no, sir. I know we talked about it, and.
Yeah, I directed, let's see if we can give a plaque to each one of these contractors that helped over there at the East Point Fire.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to have a little open house, maybe with a little bit of cake or something, and, and give them a plaque then, you know, just.
That was intention.
Everybody.
I, I don't know if we can get the city of Tallahassee to come here and accept, and I told Mike, I said, if, if, if we can, I, I would take it there and, and present it to them at their meeting. But our local contractors, Mr. Butler or not, I want to bring them in and recognize them the way they should have been recognized.
They didn't have to do that, but you know why?
But they did.
We're all fans.
And, and actually, the smaller contractor says, I don't know if we can help you on Tuesday, but we're, we're sure we can help you on Monday, but guess what? They stayed just as long as anybody else. So they, they gave up their working day and used all their equipment over there, uh, just as other people did, and with no recognition. And, and I said what I did this morning.
I make a motion that we, um, direct staff, Michael in particular, to, to basically have an, an appreciation day here at the, in the commission room, where we present the plaques and stuff, and maybe have a little.
We could do it at one of the regular meetings and, and, you know, always have it televised.
And have it televised.
Seven, whenever y'all say that.
You want something else?
Yeah, well, we need to bring them in and give them their plaques and all, and have that on TV, and I think that evening at, say, four o'clock, then we do that, where we can bring in the county employees that were out there working.
Yeah, yeah. We might do, do a dinner.
We might have to do it at Army or something.
Okay.
And just let everybody that participated come in. There were a lot of county employees whose names I didn't call this morning, which they were doing their job, I understand that. They done their job very well at a time of need when the community needed them, and, and that need to be recognized also. That's what I was trying to do this morning. So fi, figure out what we need to do, Mike.
I will.
Between you and Ms. Barfield there, I mean, Ma, Ms. Whitney there.
Oh, you see.
And see what, see what we can do by putting something together for the, uh, employees as well as the contractors and everybody that participated in it, invite everybody.
We will.
Please don't leave nobody out. Please don't leave nobody out. I don't want to hear.
I forgot to call Ms. Dan, Ms. Jennifer's name this morning, but I called Tress's name, so I've already had to apologize for that. I knew I would forget somebody.
You said everybody.
I said everybody.
Everybody.
They were there too.
Yeah, I mean, everybody participated. Any other commissioner comments? Meeting adjourned.
We've got a vote on it.
Oh.
Everybody say yeah.
Meeting is not recessed. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries, meeting adjourned.